To the flag of the United States of America, the republic of which is mission under God.
Apologize about being a little bit late. We had a lot to cover. All right, so we are going to talk announcements of actions taken in closed session. So suspended expulsion contracts EH two four two five three oh and EH two four two five three three, motion passes six oh, revoke suspended expulsion contracts EH two three two four four eight, motion passes. Reinstatements EH nineteen twenty twenty nine, EH twenty three twenty four sixteen, EH twenty three twenty four thirty three, motion passes. Contract reinstatements EH twenty two twenty three tw- twenty two twenty three forty seven, EH twenty three twenty four forty one, EH twenty three twenty four eighty six, and EH twenty four twenty five oh two, passes on motion six oh. Additional closed item, closed item actions to announce. The board has given the direction to Uba County Office of Education on a superintendent search criteria. We have determined that the search criteria will be a closed search criteria. We also, also given the direction to open the superintendent search January thirty first two thousand twenty five, and to close the search on March twenty first two thousand twenty five. There will be a July one two thousand twenty five start date. Meetings with all bargaining groups are, will start at any time, so that is open. We also agree to hold three state, pardon? Okay, on, on the bargaining groups, the start time at any time, but we will go through March fifteenth two thousand twenty five, so all the bargaining groups will have an opportunity to be heard. We will also be holding three stakeholder meetings, and those dates will be determined at this time, to be determined. Additionally, in closed session, actions items included. The board has accepted the resignation of interim superintendent Roxanne Brown effective January thirty first two thousand twenty five. The board has voted to place Jordan Reeves as of February first two thousand twenty five, the interim superintendent. The board will take action on the meeting of January twenty eighth twenty five. Next, number six comments from board members. Mr. Fier? Dr. Yang?
I just want to welcome everybody back from their Christmas holiday break. I know it's been two weeks from that, and I see that the room is full of our students, and so I just want to welcome them, and I, I congratulate them on them, a voice in their voice, and joining the political process of voice in the voice and helping improve our schools.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Hello, everybody. Welcome back. Let's have a great time tonight. Understand that we are all in this together, and we're not alone. Let's have a great time.
Thank you. Mr. Steeman?
Welcome, everybody. Happy New Year. I wanted to first thank Angela Stiegel for not roasting me harder than she did last meeting on the public, the moving the public comment back to the, the front of the meeting. I appreciate that. I promise to pay attention to the minutia of the agenda going forward. But also, I'm real happy to see our students from the MCA here tonight. Thank you all for being here. I think it's very important that you show up and speak, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Galicia?
Thank the students for coming. I think that's awesome. I think it's great of you guys to be here, and so, yeah, I just would like to second Dr. Yang and Seth. It's awesome. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, and our student representative has not, but Mr. Taylor is going to read a comment.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lucia Hernandez. I'm the ASB president at Lynn Hurst High School. I'm here today to bring to LHS News, first starting with our leadership. ASB have been on a roll with recently introducing Fun Fridays every week as a way to end the week on a positive note. We have also been preparing for our eighth grade visit, which is on fourth, February fourth, where we welcome YGN Arboga to show just a glimpse of what high school actually looks like. Elizabeth Silver was just selected to attend California's FFA's Sacramento Leadership Experience. Only seventy-five students in the state are accepted to this prestigious conference. The program is exited or excited to have a new student teacher from Chico State join the program, this spring, Ms. Val Rodarte. She will help coach FF contests, supervise projects, and teach AG classes at LHS. Seventeen Lynn Hurst FFA members will attend the California FFA May for Excellence and Advanced Leadership Academy Conference in Reading later this month. This Saturday, we are hosting our yearly winter ball. The theme is Winter May Camp. There is also a spirit week taking place that has had fairly high participation. This is the MCAA statement. This Friday, we'll hold an, an award ceremony and rally to celebrate our on-the-road students and their hard work. Next week is kindness week. Our school's link crew is making posters, sending motivational emails to uplift students and staff, and an appreciation box for students to drop off messages to be read in the bulletin. In mid-February, we're posting or hosting a school-wide rock, paper, scissors contest. It's going to be incredibly fun, and students will get a chance to compete with both their peers and teachers. The Excel Club is actively working on our spring blood drive and a donation drive for victims of the LA wildfires. We're also planning several exciting activities, including Sadie Hawkins, the Spring Carnival, and more. Thank you for your time, and I hope you all have a great rest of your day.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, superintendent, board members and cabinet. My name is Abdiel Sanchez Gonzalez, and I represent the South and North Lynn Hurst High School. I would start with a recap of the second quarter. This year has been packed with activities and opportunities for our students. We have volunteered at Johnson Park Elementary, Lyons Club Marysville, and Olivehurst Elementary, to name a few. We have more volunteer opportunities available for students this month through Shady Creek Counseling. Students have received applications and were interviewed for positions. Later this month, we gather and provide student volunteers for the school to earn community service hours and experience. South Lynn Hurst has been invited to participate, participate in the Cash for College Workshop this Thursday, January twenty-third at Lynn Hurst High School. This event will take place after school from one to three PM. All seniors are encouraged to participate. Lastly, South Lynn Hurst, Olivehurst location has created a mentorship program with Johnson Park Elementary. A small group of bilingual high school students walk over to Johnson Park twice a week and mentor first and second grade ELL students in their classroom. It has been a positive and rewarding experience. We will continue this partnership through the remainder of the school year. Thank you for the opportunity to share our school activities with you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Comments from school site representatives? And Marysville High School, Lynn Hurst, is it everybody? Okay. Opportunity for employee organizations to address the board, nine point one. Opportunity for organizations to address the board, Marysville Unified Teachers Association, MUDA.
Good evening. Angela Stiegel, president for Marysville Unified Teachers Association. And first thing, we would like to acknowledge to the board our appreciation for the fact that you guys did go into closed session and came out and did say that you do, in fact, want to have these meetings with labor organizations, so thank you for that. Also acknowledge that Jordan is going to be our new interim, so he and I may be in more phone contact than before then, so I don't know, that could be a good thing or a bad thing. Sorry about that. Yeah. Also, we would like to acknowledge and thank the students from the middle college as well. It is always, especially as an educator, it's always a great thing to see students who are standing up for what they believe in and advocating for themselves and advocating for their education. So we would like to acknowledge and thank them, as well as their families, especially on a rather lengthy evening all of a sudden, and a rather cool evening as well to be outside. I believe that a lot of people would like to kind of hear at least a little something in regards to negotiations or mediation. It is no secret that we are still in the mediation process with our contract negotiations between the teachers' union and the school district. We are diligently trying to get things finished up there. We are hoping to have a TA finalized in the next couple of days, at least. We have a general membership meeting for our members on Thursday afternoon after school, so we would really hope to be able to give our members full information on that day to be able to start a ratification vote. We will be able to give them information on where we stand and where things are right now, but we do hope that we have the TA completed by then. I kind of hate in a way to go here, because, you know, here we're talking about new superintendent search and trying to think positive and think of the future, but I would be really remiss if I didn't mention a very disturbing recent development in regards to our kind of sorta former superintendent. Especially, I'd be really remiss considering the fact that my phone has been off the hook ever since it was posted online. But our former superintendent, it was bad enough when she was able to sit home for an entire school year and collect paycheck, something that none of the rest of us can do. Now, to add insult to injury, she has a new job at USC, and so she'll be collecting two paychecks. I can't get a fair settlement for my members, but yet we can pay a former superintendent who drove our district into the so-called poorhouse and drove us into the poorest morale I've seen in a long time. We can pay her twice. I wondered a long time ago why it was that we didn't terminate the superintendent, Fallas Ronnie. I wondered when she was put on leave, why we didn't terminate said superintendent. And I wonder more now than I ever have how it is that this school district cannot terminate this individual, because now there is a cost savings. Looking for a few bucks to save? Well, I appreciate the fact that our outgoing interim is doing something that will absolutely save us a few dollars, so that is greatly appreciated, and we thank her for her time and for helping us out while she's been here. But we could save a lot of money by terminating a superintendent, one that, at least in recent memory, I can't think of somebody who deserved it more. But I will also say that if anybody is really wondering about her new job, I would suggest to people that they look up what her new job is, because it's almost as disturbing as the fact that she's going to get paid twice this year. She's supposed to be training new superintendents. Really? And so I would sincerely hope that when we reach out to USC, that we don't discover that Marysville Joint Unified, nor any of our trustees, current or former, wrote any sort of glowing letter of recommendation, because that will not go over well. I can't fathom that anybody would hire her to be a superintendent, much less train superintendents. So if anybody in the sound of my voice wants something fun and interesting to do in the next few days of your life, I would suggest that you start writing to USC and letting them know that they may want to look somewhere else, because I don't need any more superintendents with that kind of training. I didn't need the first one. I got, I don't need another one. So if you want any email address information for that, I'll give you three guesses who's already looked it up and has started writing. So if you need it, just let me know. Thank you to the board, especially for welcoming us all back, and I do hope that once we get out of here this evening, everybody can get home and get nice and warm, and we can start this superintendent search, and like I said, get our negotiations wrapped up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stiegel. You've been acknowledged. Operating engineers, local unit three. California School Employees Association, number two, three, two, six, and six, four, eight. Association of Management and Confidential Employees. And supervisory unit. Okay? Next, we're going to move on to public comments. Person, persons wishing to address the board under public comments or specific agenda item prior to the board taking action must complete a public's comment card. It looks something like this. And place it in the basket. Speakers will be invited to the podium in the order of the public comments cards that were received. Irregular board meetings, the public may address topics not on the agenda during this section of the agenda and ask that they be heard during a specific agenda item. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker and a total of twenty minutes total time for public input on each item per Board Bylaw nine, three, two, three. The Ralph M. Brown Act prevents the Board of Trustees from responding to these comments with the exception of clarifying questions. The California Government Code, Section five, four, nine, five, four, point, two, point, A, states, "No action or discussion shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except that members of a legislative body or its staff may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by persons exercising their public testimony rights under Section five, four, nine, five, four, point, three." The first comment we have, card here, is from Kelly Bilskey. Kelly Bilskey, are you here? Thank you.
Thank you for the correct pronunciation of my name.
I, fifty fifty, and I, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Bilskey, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Olivehurst Elementary School. This is my eleventh year in our district, and every year, it seems, when it comes to contact, contract negotiations, the same message we are hearing is that MUDA doesn't, does most of the giving and the district is most of the taking. When I look back on the current salary negotiations, when MUDA was asking for COLA, which is meant to keep the employees of the district current with the costs associated with living, the district proposals of zero to percent to three percent seems out of touch with the cost of things. The COLA is money that the district has already received from the state of California to help with the increased costs of goods and services. Your employees should be included with these increased costs, and we should not have to beg or plea to continue to be able to afford to live. Yes, the district's PG&E bills have increased, but so have ours. My grocery bill has gone up as well. I'm encouraging the district, as you work on your budget for the upcoming year, to remember your employees and our costs of living, and put the COLA for us in your budget to begin with, and not to have to try and find money for us to have an increase to be able to afford to live. If the COLA is two percent, then that should be your opening offer to the labor unions, and not something insulting like zero percent. I encourage you to work with the labor organizations and come up with a fair and equitable compensation plan for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Boarders recognize you. Raymond Starr.
Before I read this, I'd like to say that a lot of things I've been hearing lately are, is this term preferential treatment. If a child is not succeeding, we give them programs to succeed. If children who are not exceeding like other children, they have special schools for that, alternative learning paths, counselors, they get all these things. But what about the children who do succeed? The children who work harder? They get accused of preferential treatment? I am accusing them of meritocracy. I'm accusing them of being rewarded for the effort that they put in. And I see it every day. My name is Raymond Starr, and I'm the proud father of a Middle College Academy student. I'm also the father of three other children, one of whom is currently in middle school and eager to join the Middle College Academy in the future. Inspired by your brother's glowing experiences and enthusiastic praise of the program. In today's world, it's often easier to accept the baseline or mediocrity than strive for excellences. Failure can sometimes seem built into the process of achievement. Managing and uplifting a large and diverse group of students is a monumental challenge, so shout out to the teachers. One I cannot even begin to fully comprehend or even criticize. Yet, is it, it is in overcoming these challenges that we see the stories of true resilience and success, much like the heroes in novels or films who conquer insurmountable odds. I've achieved my own success through preservance, uh, perseverance of meritocracy, having faced adversity a lot in my past. But what about those students who foresee challenges and practically work to overcome them? What about the overachievers who are ready to push the boundaries but are not given enough opportunities to fully test their potential? For these students, Middle College Academy is a critical outlet. MCA is not just another high school option, it is a transformative program that equips middle-aged students with the tools to succeed in adult life. It gives them a head start. It offers a unique path for those willing to step off the beaten path, providing far more than just an academic benefit. The program fosters a sense of community, purpose, and ambition, nurturing like-minded individuals, and preparing them to excel in ways traditional education systems often fail to achieve. The socioeconomic impact of this program is immense. By aligning attention and resources with the efforts and outcomes of its students, MCA creates space for innovation and growth. While the program may face scrutiny or controversy due to its origins or its perceived exclusivity, what has been built here is something remarkable, and also something educational institutions have long-
Thank you, Mr. Starr. You've been acknowledged. Thank you. Next, next we have Claire Shawcroft.
Good evening. My name is Claire Shawcroft, and I think as, well, you can tell by the T-shirt, I'm a student of Middle College Academy, and I am starting my freshman year. The fact that I'm even able to get up here and talk and experiment, share my experience is just like mind-boggling to me. This is not anything I would have seen myself doing in the future. Before I get too far, I just want to say that this school is amazing for various reasons. I have been to multiple schools, adding up to about like nine or ten all around the states and all around the country. And I just have to say, out of all the places I've been, this is one of the most friendly, welcoming, high-achieving schools that I have attended, and it's just a really special program. Before I learned about this program, the decision between Marysville High School and Marysville Charter Academy for the Arts weighed heavily on both my parents and I. It seemed that neither high school would provide my desired education nor support my goals, and I felt almost trapped. I began to question the purpose of attending high school and debated going to homeschool, and it honestly felt like that might be the better choice. And I experienced a profound sense of melancholy that overshadowed my daily life. While attending MHS would keep me and my friends together, education meant more to me, so I was reluctant to settle for less than what I needed. Then, after what felt like two, felt like a moment of giving up, I received an email introducing the MCA program. I had to read it two or three times to really register what it offered, because it seemed too good to be true to me, and to both me and my parents. The more research, the more we researched it, the more captivated we became. As soon as we could, we called Mr. Lowman to discuss the details. The college credits I would earn would, will transfer seamlessly to my dream school, Brigham Young University. The joy and hope I felt was indescribable. The next week, I spent time applying to the program, probably boring my teachers to death with my ramblings and excited explanations, and I spent time poring over the MCA newsletters just so excited and fueled with this, just pure excitement and happiness that this is even a choice. I was even able to get an issue of a writing magazine that the MCA publishes every year featuring short stories, poems, essays, and everything. And after applying, I checked my email daily in hopes of receiving the glorious acceptance letter, and when it did, it is something that I've cherished ever since. I just want to say that, I think I can speak for all of us when I say that we have each felt the light and this aching to achieve something by going to this program. It is absolutely amazing, and thank you so much for letting me speak.
Brianna Shawcroft.
Hello, that's my daughter. She's amazing. So is this school, and I, I just want to say thank you for letting us come here and share our support and our concerns with you. I, as a parent, a citizen, and a taxpayer, want to thank you for your dedicated commitment and special attention to the budget. This is a very important thing, and we appreciate your respect on this issue. When it comes to Middle College Academy, it is, it was our understanding that the grant received to establish the school, plus the average daily attendance funds for each student would allow it to pay for itself in the future, and that, this being its second year, we only have freshmen and sophomores, and our attendance, our popular, student population is about thirty. The current California average daily attendance fund is about twelve thousand per student, so this school should be bringing in about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. Operating costs, I believe, should be small, because we only have two, two teachers, one para and one secretary, and it's being housed in rooms that were formerly unoccupied in the community college. What I would hope that you would remember is that this school is new, and each year will be growing, and at its full capacity, we'll have about a hundred students, which, if the rates stay constant, should bring in about a million point two, sorry, one point two million dollars per year. Even if we have a few more staff members, a few more teachers, this, this school should be able to not only carry its own weight, but also be a benefit financially for the school district. So I feel like there are definitely, we need to find places in the budget to cut costs, and I respect that very much, but I think that this program might not be the place to find those, those savings. Also, I think that there might be this mistaken understanding that if this school closes, that these students will then be redispersed into the regular high school settings, either at Marysville or Lindhurst. But I, it is not my experience that these students will be going there. When I first moved into this district, I was counseled by multiple parents to beware of Marysville High School and Lindhurst because they are dangerous and that they have some of the lowest ranking educational performances in the state. So I was counseled to go to Gridley or to homeschool or to go to Wheatland. And those have been some of the things I've been pondering until this came. And when we found out about this school, we were overjoyed that we could actually stay in the district. I know several homeschool, homeschooling is very popular up in the hills where I live. And I know many parents that when they find out about this program are intrigued and I know a few that are planning to come in. So not only will this be a benefit when it has full capacity, but it has the potential to bring in new students, which is also benefit. So I hope that you not only keep the program, but promote it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brianna. Vicky Privalov. Sorry if I missed that.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Vicky Privalov and I'm a parent of a student attending Middle College Academy. I stand before you today as a concerned parent, deeply troubled by the district's decision to close down the Middle College Academy that my daughter attends. This program has not only been a stepping stone for the education, but a catalyst for her growth, ambition, and vision for the future. The program has made such a positive impact on my daughter's life. The decision for my daughter to leave her high school, her friends, and the flow she has known for the last nine years was not an easy decision. In hindsight, it has been one of the best decisions she has ever made for herself. My daughter has thrived in the environment. She has found a place where her curiosity is nurtured, her goals are supported, and her dreams feel within reach. The Middle College Academy has given her the opportunity to take college-level courses, build connections with mentors, develop a deep sense of responsibility for her future. She has a clear vision of where she wants to go, a successful career in healthcare. And this program has provided her with the tools, confidence, and foundation to get there. Closing the school would not only disrupt her education, but would impact countless other students who are also building their futures here. These students are the future of our community and they deserve the chance to thrive as my daughter has. I urge the district to reconsider this decision. The Middle College Academy is not just a school. It's a pathway to success, a community of growth, and a place where students like my daughter are learning to build their dreams. I ask you to think about the impact it will have on students like my daughter who are finding their voices, their dreams, and their potential in this program. Let us not take away the very thing that is helping them thrive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Vicky. Juliana Privalov.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I stand before you today frustrated, irritated, and disappointed that my school is so easily thrown into jeopardy. My name is Juliana Privalov. I'm a student myself of Middle College Academy. Prior to this school year, I attended a different high school in our district. I remember waking up every morning with my heart full of dread and misery. I truly believed that the school I went to was slowly but surely destroying my mental health. The staff failed to make the students feel loved, valued, prioritized, and welcomed. It got to the point where I wanted to transfer, whether it was a school, a different high school outside of our district, or Middle College Academy. Now, because I am standing before you today, I think the decision that I made is obvious. I remember my first day at Middle College Academy. I was instantly greeted by the wonderful staff who took their time to get to know me and help me with everything I needed. The students also had to introduce themselves and instantly made me feel welcomed. This was already a complete 180 of how I was of August 2023 to May 2024, just within my first day. Our principal, Mr. Lowman, has gone above and beyond to help us get, to help us get the classes we need and then some. Throughout this school year, my schoolmates and I have been able to figure out what we want to career in and how we will accomplish that. And we are working our way towards our futures now. Middle college being shut down would be extremely devastating to everyone here. It's not just about losing a place to learn. It's about losing the foundation we've been, we've been building for our futures. The school has given us the tools and confidence to pursue careers and dreams that seemed out of reach before. To shut it down would be to strip away the hope and progress that we've made. This school has been more than a blessing to many families as college could have been too expensive for those who had a future that needed extreme schooling for. I know that the school has healed many students' mental health as it did for mine. Members of the school board, your number one priority should be the students. If this is correct, then there should be no hesitation on your final decision of what should be done with our school. Middle College Academy has done nothing but good for all of the students. Our education, along with mental health, has been extremely valued here. So please, we ask that you also put that into perspective. Students aren't just a number here. We are valued as an actual person. I hope that after today, you realize the importance and, the importance and impact Middle College Academy has made on our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Juliana. Adam Moore.
Hello, students, parents, faculty, and esteemed members of the board. And of course, intermediate superintendent, currently resigned, Roxanne Brown. I'm Adam Moore, the elected representative of the same Save MCA protests. I hope you all understand that as a board, your decisions truly do have a deep impact on our students' futures. And that is not one to be taken lightly. The MCA has created an immeasurable amount of opportunities in your youth's life. I, I believe you all understand that our program, a four-year high school, allows students to also obtain an associate's degree in their discipline of choice, one that will allow them to, if they choose to, enter the workforce right after, right after high school with a degree of their choice. And in most cases, choose to attend a four-year, a four-year college after. I am currently on track to attend a four-year college. And I understand that the shutting down of this program will put all of my future plans into jeopardy, as well as the futures of every single student here. We have built and developed a community here, one that is beyond anything you have seen in the Marysville Joint Unified School District. Currently, our students and parents at MCA are looking over other options than MCA to attend if this school does happen to be shut down. And we have not found any in MJUSD. Currently, I see that Lions Club was brought up on the agenda as something that the Marysville High School plans on attending. I'd like to inform you all, if you aren't familiar, that the Middle College Academy obtained second and third place at that competition last year. Just to show you that these 30 students are the highest achievers in the Marysville Joint Unified School District. And we have plans to bring many others to our academy so they can see the bright future that you can, or the brightest futures that you can find in Marysville. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Adam. Next, we're moving on to number 12. Approval of the December 17th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting Minutes.
I'd like to make a correction. I'd like to pull those minutes.
So we are going to pull 12.1 out of the consent agenda action. Okay, for discussion. So that on, on that correction, it says Member Taylor. Yeah. Oh, there it is. Okay. That the board elected Oliver Taylor as clerk. And it should be read as the board elected Dr. Yang as clerk. So what I need is a motion on 12.1 to amend that particular item and up for correction. I have a motion to approve from Mr. Steiman. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second from Mr. Taylor. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have. What's that? Next, we have the consent items. 12, 2 through, through 16. Seven, yeah, 16. Through 16, sorry about that. We got a lot, a lot of stuff tonight. 2, 15, 10. Any questions on those? Yes, Mr. Yang.
Yeah, I have a question. Let me scroll to it. It's on the school accountability report. I believe that's in consent.
What, what number is that?
I'm trying to scroll to it. It's, unless if I screw up and, yeah, it's in consent. It's in.
15, 6?
15, 6, yeah.
Okay.
So I, it's specifically on one school accountability report. And it's on the Happen Chance, Middle College Academy. And it's on page 17 to 19. It doesn't seem that there is any spending per pupil on that page. So if you look at the school site, it says zero and zero. Yeah. Unless, unless if I have the mono. On the site expenditure per pupil.
That particular page on the fiscal year, if you'll notice at the top, it says for 22, 23. And the Middle College started in 23, 24.
Got it, got it. So, so, okay. So what we will know is, just so that all, all the students and the parents here, is that when we update the school accountability report for next year, we will know exactly what we are spending per pupil.
That would be updated next year, which is how the template works. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So on the floor, there's no additional questions. I need a motion to ratify the acceptance of the consent items 15, 1. Yeah, for Educational Services. Do I have a motion? Seth Steeman, motion approved. Do I have a second on the floor? Second by Dr. Yang. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the consent agenda items and personnel, 16, 1 through 16, 5. Does anyone have anything to pull or question? 16, 1 through 16, 8. Okay. Do I have a motion on the floor to approve the consent items 16, 1 through 16, 8? Motion by Dr. Yang and a second. Second by Mr. Taylor. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Consent Business Services, 17, 1 through 17, 3. Any items of question that need to be pulled? Do I have a motion to accept donations? Uh, excuse me, I have a motion to accept the consent items on the floor? Member, Mr. Galicia is second. Seth, Seth Steeman is second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving towards new business. Okay, 18, 1 is set time, date, and place of regular meetings once a month, second Tuesday, and adopt supporting bylaw 9, 3, 2, 0, meetings and notices. And we do have a public comment. Ms. Angela Stiegl.
Good evening again. As far as I can tell, I'm still Angela Stiegl. And as far as I know, I am still the president of the Marysville Unified Teachers Association. So a couple of quick things. One is just in the document that is, I believe, the updated policy for one meeting a month. Being the English teacher in me, I would be extremely remiss if I didn't point out that it says under regular meetings, unless otherwise determined by the board, the board shall hold one regular meeting each month. Regular meetings shall be held at 5:30 PM on the second and/or fourth Tuesday of each month. You can't have one meeting and have it be and. So I believe what you need there is an or and may need to cross out that extra and. So that's the first quick thing. The second thing is, I understand that as much fun as this is to do on a Tuesday evening of everybody's lives, and I understand that you all have jobs, you have careers, you have other things you're doing besides this. I understand that the idea of going back to two meetings a month may be somewhat daunting and maybe something that you're less than excited about. But I will tell you that at this point in time, I hate to say it, but I believe that two meetings a month is actually what we need, especially with the current bargaining situation even. The one meeting a month has really kind of ground some things to a halt and some things to a snail's pace as far as business goes within the district. And one of the items of business being contract negotiations and negotiations with your labor groups. It becomes extremely discouraging sometimes when you feel like you're kind of getting the ball rolling maybe or you're all excited to get something done and it's, we have to hurry up and wait a month for another board meeting. And sometimes we have had business items up here that have gone, you know, a little sideways. And I know sometimes for the board, it's difficult to make the decision to table something because it's not just two weeks until we can bring it up again. It's a whole nother month. And sometimes we have deadlines and stuff that kind of get in the way and that. And I think sometimes we have had decisions that have been made, maybe begrudgingly by the board strictly to meet a deadline as opposed to necessarily maybe getting all the information and tabling something strictly because of that. This is one of the things that the union brought up with the former superintendent when the idea came up to go to one meeting a month. It really hampers the process and progress of business within the district. And I could tell you from labor leader standpoint, it really gets difficult sometimes to try to get things done, whether it's even just sunshining, sunshining for articles for contract negotiations or approving retro checks or those types of things. or approving retro checks or those types of things. I would urge the board to go back to the two meetings a month like you're supposed to, and I know you get to choose down here, so that's why I'm speaking under this first one, so you don't vote on it first and then, you know, make it a moot point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stiegl. Again, 18-1 is with one meeting a month per second Tuesday and adopts supporting by law 9320, meetings and notices. Any questions from the board? Do I have a motion to support that?
Can I get a clarification?
Yes.
Yeah, so if I understand correctly, from what's on the meeting agenda, 18.1 is to have one meeting on the first?
Second Tuesday.
The second Tuesday, but 18.2 is to have another meeting on the fourth Tuesday.
That's correct.
So if we approve 18.1, and if we approve 18.2, what that says is we will have two meetings a month.
That's correct. It's actually 18.3.
Oh, so, yeah, if we... Yeah, there's three ways, actually, because the permutation is actually three ways, right? If we approve 18.1 and 18.2, we're in this ironic place where we have two policies that governs two meetings, right? Or we just approve 18.3, and it governs one. That's why I'm asking for the clarification.
Sounds like an SAT question here for a test, I gotta say.
So if I may interject?
But is that what's being presented to the board?
So at the last board meeting, Dr. Yang, you made a motion, but it was not voted upon. We have a member, a board member, who is not currently present, who wanted to keep one meeting. So we elected to move to this meeting. It is a strong recommendation, as well as we just heard from Mrs. Stiegl, that we have two board meetings a month to conduct our business. So you would have to vote, because it's a board agenda item, you will have to vote on 18.1, no, if you don't want one board meeting a month. You would have to vote on 18.2 agenda item, no, if you don't want one meeting on the fourth Tuesday, and you would have to vote yes if you wanted two board meetings a month. But we wanted to give you the option, and also, the meetings are set for 5:30, which is currently in board policy.
Okay, so I just want to make sure we understand the permutations. Okay.
We do, but anyway, we do.
Okay, well, for us, I understand the permutations, so, okay. I'll motion to vote no on 18.1.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Taylor. All in favor?
Of no.
Of voting no? All in favor of voting no? All right. Any opposed? Kids, pay attention to this here. Motion passes on a vote of no. 18.2, set time and place, date of regular meetings, one month on the fourth Tuesday. Do I have a motion of no on the floor? Dr. Yang? Second, please. Mr. Fuhrer, on a second, voted no. All in favor of a voter no on 18.2? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries of no. The next one will be easy. 18.3, set time and date and place of regular meetings, two meetings a month, second and fourth Tuesday, and adopt support by law 9320, meetings and notices. Can I get a motion on the floor for a... Thank you, Mr. Fuhrer, can I get a second? Mr. Taylor, in a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Right now, we are going to go back into closed session, and we will return.
Yubasutterlives local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
In Yuba County, there's a legendary diner.
Delicious. Oh my gosh, thank you so much.
Where the parking lot tells a story. A story as simple as biscuits and gravy.
The food is good, the prices are wonderful. My dad has so many friends here that come here, and it's, my dad and mom have known Mary Jane and her dad before Duke.
Duke's Diner on Seventh Avenue, home of legendary chili, holiday pies, and generations of local residents preparing tasty, hearty food for generations of local people. Join Mary Jane and her genial associates as they serve meals you'll come back for. Duke's Diner on Seventh Avenue, Olivehurst.
In Marysville, where roots run deep, McNally Appliances promises to keep. The best brands with a smile on its face. We serve what we sell, it's a warm embrace. Competitive pricing, you can't... With every purchase, you'd love it more. From fridges to washers, all in a line. We install with care to make it shine. Major brands, trusted and true. McNally Appliances is here for you. Oh, McNally McNally, we're your first choice. In Marysville, we help you rejoice. We serve what we sell, no need to stress. At McNally Appliances, we're simply the best. Our promise stands, we'll always be here. McNally Appliances, bringing your cheer.
McNally Appliances, 119 D Street, Marysville. McNallyAppliances.com. You've seen signs marking some of the gems in Marysville. They're produced by Sapphire Sign Company, providing something small, large, and mobile. With decades of experience, Sapphire Signs has pioneered local production of a variety of signs, like temporary campaign-style signs, welcomes for unique events, building signage, event promotion, and vehicle customization. Need a sign? Make it a gem from Sapphire Sign Company, on the web at sapphiremarketinggroup.net. Sapphire.